This is the agenda for Monday. Mayor, how are you today?
We're going to, so it's going to be six. Are you okay with being up here?
We're going to give you enough time to do it.
I'm calling the July 23, 2020 special meeting of the Roswell City Council to order. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kindred.
Here.
Counselor Stubbs.
Here.
Counselor Oropesa.
Here.
Counselor Robach.
Here.
Counselor Best.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Peterson.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Kentai.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. This time, I'll call on Counselor Stubbs.
Mr. Mayor, forgive me. I move to approve the special city council meeting for Thursday, July 23, 2020's agenda as presented.
All right. I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to approve the agenda for the July 23 special city council meeting as presented. Any discussion or debate? Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to know items number five and number six. Why is this two items did not go through a committee?
I can answer that my understanding, Ms. Call, correct me if I'm wrong, but you received notification from five councilors to place these items on the agenda. Is that correct, Ms. Call?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. According to the governing body rules of order, there are several different ways items can be placed on the agenda. One is by the mayor, one is by the city manager, and the other would be having five councilors request to have that item put on there. And we did have, I did have five councilors email me to have those put on. If you would like to look at that, I do have those emails with me.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments about the agenda? If not, I'll ask for a voice vote on the agenda, a yes or aye approves the agenda, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
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 I have two nays, Counselor Oropesa and Counselor Peterson. Councilors, our vote boxes are not, are they, they're not working tonight, are they?
We are not going to utilize the voting equipment tonight, sir.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I should have said something earlier. That's, and the same thing with requests to speak. So I will strive to observe. If you give me a signal, please don't hesitate to be bold in your signaling tonight, so I be sure and don't miss you. One other item I would like to suggest is that, this was brought to my attention by the mayor pro tem, is that when we're discussing a particular item, before a counselor speaks for a second time, to see if there's anyone who hasn't spoken yet wishing to share an opinion. I think that's a legitimate approach. So if you wish to speak a second time, understand that I will quickly canvas those who have not yet spoken to see if they wish to speak. Otherwise, we will proceed on as normal. So with that, moving on to item number two, Counselor Robach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 20-43 approving the year-end budget adjustments for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Robach and a second by Counselor Kindred to approve Resolution 20-43. Mr. Neb.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for tonight. I was going to cover my words on the first three items all at one time, just so you know what we're doing and where we're going with the budget. And then I have members of my staff that will cover all of the details of those items. So Resolution 20-43 is the, is essentially, it just shores up this, the past year's budget that ran from July 1st to June 2020. And so this shores it up with the real numbers as to where all those numbers are at. Resolution 20-44 is our final DFA report for the fourth quarter. So both of these actions have to be done so that we are ready for the budget conversation, which is the Resolution 20-45. So when we get into that budget, what we are going to cover, because it's my understanding that no amendments came forward out of the finance committee's conversation on this, is that there will be a discussion about what, what the real numbers, what the final numbers are for the money that is carried into this budget, and any of the adjustments that we've made based upon those conditions. So Ms. Ray will be covering our year-end budget adjustments. Mr. Martinez will be covering the DFA report, and Mr. Fuentes will be covering the budget. So I'll, at that point, I will just, I'll take the questions as we reach each one of those. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're asking for approval of Resolution 2043. This is to approve the year-end budget and the adjustments to go along with that. We are required by DFA to submit to you all for review the prior year budget. So this is the fiscal year 2020 budget in its entirety. Any changes that happened throughout the year, we were submitting those to you all monthly. So anything that's reflected in this summary is anything that would have happened for the month of May and June. And then after the summary is the budget in its entirety, beginning with revenues, transfers, and then expenses. So in that first column, we have the approved final budget. This is what you all would have approved this time last year. The local bars are transfers between line items. They don't affect the budget overall. The state bars are whatever we have already brought to you throughout the year. And then Resolution 2043 is what we're asking for approval now. And then that final column would reflect all of those changes. So in the summary, we have the revenues, the transfers, and the expenses. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions on this matter? I don't see any hands up. So since there are no questions or comments on Resolution 20-43, I will ask for a roll call vote. Roll call vote, a yes or aye approves Resolution 20-43, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kindred.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item, item number three, Counselor Robach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 20-44 approving the final DFA fourth quarter financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Robach and a second by Counselor Kindred to approve Resolution 20-44. Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is a resolution to approve the DFA fourth quarter cash report. It includes any revenue expenditure and transfer for every fund reported to DFA. And so this is annual, and in the attachment, there's the report recap. That would basically be DFA's version of what we use as a budget recap. And it's important to note that not all of DFA's funds match up with what we have. They're going to be a little bit jaded, and that's just the way it wraps up and rolls up into their chart of accounts. And so, yes, the ending cash balance for June 30, 2020 in this report will carry forward into the fiscal year 21 budget, and you'll see that in the left-hand column of the budget recap. And I'll stand for any more questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martinez? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, a yes or aye approves Resolution 20-44, a no or nay rejects the resolution. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kindred.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, item number four, Counselor Robach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 20-45 adopting a final budget for fiscal year ending 20, excuse me, ending June 30, 2021.
I have a motion by Counselor Robach and a second by Counselor Kindred to approve Resolution 20-45. Mr. Fuentes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So before I start with my, with my presentation, I want to just acknowledge the finance department and the utility office for all the hard work that they do throughout the year. When you think about the amount of money that is, that is accounted for, they do quite a bit of transactions, and they've done an excellent job. I also want to recognize the municipal court, even as a separate elected body, they, they work with management and staff to work on their budget, considering some of the difficulties we had to deal with. And the judge is here with us today, but I want to recognize the effort that they've made to be able to bridge and have a better communication with the court. But finally, a special recognition to Deanna Garcia, Stephen Martinez, and Chanel. They really worked tirelessly this last two weeks to put this budget together, so I want a special thanks to them as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I will move on to the Resolution 20-45. As everybody has been reporting, this is a resolution that is required by the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration, as they do require the budget, the final budget, to be adopted by July 31st. In turn, they will review it and provide a final approval of that budget by September 1st. The finance committee did discuss the budget at the regular meetings on June 4th and July 2nd. The finance committee recommended to the full council, three to one, Resolution 2045 for the final budget at the regular meeting on July 2nd. So with the, as, as Manager Neb pointed out, there weren't any amendments to the budget, but I do want to highlight some of those summary changes that are included in here, and some of the reason why, for those changes. As you can see, some of the things that, that we have to carry forward from the DFA fourth quarter report is the fourth quarter report ending cash balances, which in turn show up in our beginning cash balance for July 1st, 2020. Some of the other changes have been the encumbrances that were incurred in last fiscal year 20 that carried forward. Some of those expenses as well, we accounted for some new grants that we, that we were notified, like an E9 on one grant for $305,000. We finally did receive notice that the all-inclusive park and the field quads state appropriations got approved, so we will be expecting those grant agreements coming soon. Some of the other changes were insurance premiums, the ending cash balances. We consolidated some expenses that we had presented during our budget meeting, and there were some damage claims carryover. Did you have any questions? No. So the next slide is just, this is the new budget recap with some of those items that we just covered. This is just to give a quick snapshot of some of those, just where the beginning cash balance is. And then moving forward, the difference between what we presented in the previous and now, as you can see at the far right, even though you see an available cash, which was a little bit different from the first budget that we presented, now that we have final numbers. Although that's, it states in there, available cash, I just want to bring to the council's attention that there are some items, there are forthcoming, that to some extent have already, have taken a bite out of that share. For example, I know we've been, we already waived the first two furloughs for the year. There might be further consideration of that, which will be part of that, that will be using part of that funding there. We also will be presenting, when we talk about capital projects at the next meeting, there's the dispatch project, which is about $400,000. We're also talking about, hopefully, you know, a library roof. I know that was in big discussion. And then, of course, later on in the agenda, you all will be discussing the CDBG project as well. So all of that will kind of have, you know, some, there's the possibility of that funding already being allocated to some of those items. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And again, just wanted to kind of recap some of the, just the, all of the funds, where they're at. That's just a quick snapshot of all of the funds in our budget. And at the very end, as you can see there, we have a total beginning cash of $44 million with the total revenues of 87, and then 101 in expenses. And we'll cover some of those just in some visual graphs, just for everybody's, just benefit and how it kind of captures everything. Here, we're looking at the revenue and expenses just for the major funds, which is the general fund, the air center, the water, wastewater, and sanitation, with the general fund making up $36 million of the overall revenue of the $87 million for the total budget. On the expense side, we're covering there the general fund, the air center, water, wastewater, and sanitation. As you can see, there's similar share in, in the size of the pie for that, for those major funds. The next slide, what shows is just a budget comparison from prior fiscal years. As you can see there, the first section is talking about the revenues and comparing them from '18, '19, '20, and now '21 for both revenues, your salaries. Yes, Counselor Robach.
Thank you. I just, can you clarify if these are, are these, these are budgets or these are actuals?
Budgets.
Thank you.
Yes. They are budgets, again, just so that everybody compares what, how we've been budgeting over the years. And as you can see, the trend is kind of, it's not, it's not too far out for all, all categories in that chart. One of the things I wanted to kind of just show here, the last two slides, will be to cover just the GRT. What are we seeing? Because I know that we rely heavily on GRT. Because I know that we rely heavily on GRT. However, we have received a little bit more than we expected because of the COVID. What you see here are the final numbers for fiscal year 20, $38 million for the fiscal year. But remember that in the first, in the beginning of the fiscal year, we received two payments that were outside of the norm. And so that's, that number is in there. Taking those numbers out, it would be closer to around $35 million as opposed to 38. Again, we don't anticipate we're going to see those two anomalies again this fiscal year, but you never know. And the last slide, what I wanted to show is just, as we begin the new fiscal year and we begin to track GRT moving forward, it is always important that we're still in this pandemic, and it's still unknown, you know, what the impact may be. But it's important to know, in our region, we've been fortunate that we've seen the July of last year compared to this year. As you can see, there's a 6%. However, when you look at other surrounding communities, they are taking a harder hit than we are. Again, it's, we just kind of, we're going to continue to monitor that. And as the fiscal year progresses, then we can make the adjustments necessary as the council wishes and management. And with that, Mr. Mayor, Council, I will stand for any questions.
All right. Councilors, questions or comments for Mr. Fuentes or Mr. Neb? Okay. I don't see anyone wishing to jump in here. At this point, I'll ask for a roll call vote, a yes or aye approves Resolution 20-45, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesak?
No with an explanation, please.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Counselor Oropesak, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that I'm not in favor of the budget is for a number of reasons. Number one, we have a 312 reserve as opposed to the 112 that is required. And my glasses are getting off. And the other one, the next, next reason is, this budget is based on the fact that there were some downloads or downgrades of certain positions. There were furloughs that will be enacted, and there were some buyouts. And as I understand it, the Clean and Safe Program still has about $400,000 in there. And the buyouts, you know, at first I didn't have a problem with it. But after I saw the number of people on the list and the people that were on the list, it concerned me a lot. And I am just wondering if the buyout was not a way of getting rid of, rid of people that we were anticipating to get rid of anyway. And so, you know, we tell the public that we're in dire need of revenues, but yet we continue to spend and spend and spend. You know, a good example is the $1 million for the infrastructure and security. Last month, or last meeting, we approved a $4,000 a month, or $40,000 for a consultant. And so it doesn't make sense to me that we are telling the people how bad of shape we are as far as the budget is concerned, but we still keep spending. And we're spending based on the backs of our staff. And I'm talking about the downgrades, I'm talking about the furloughs, I'm talking about the buyouts. To me, that doesn't make sense. And to me, it's not right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number five, Counselor Robach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve a directive to the city manager to not enforce emergency orders issued by the governor concerning COVID-19 through any of the city departments.
I have a motion by Counselor Robach and a second by Counselor Kennard to provide directive to the city manager regarding enforcement of emergency orders. Mr. Neb?
Yes. Mayor, City Council, as these next two items actually came from the city council and asked to be placed on the agenda, I don't have much to add to it. At this point in time, I would return that, the conversation back to the mayor and city council on this directive. So, thank you.
And on this note, I had asked Mr. Patterson to give us some overview on where we are at with the public health orders and attorney general opinion and any comments on it. Mr. Patterson?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I was asked to give kind of a rundown of how we got to this moment. And so I'll start with, really the kind of catalyst of this was, on the 3rd of this month, the office of the governor issued a directive to local jurisdictions instructing that local jurisdictions enforce the mask mandate in the latest public health order by issuing petty misdemeanor citations to those individuals determined to be violating the mask mandate intentionally or willfully. The directive was, I think, based on or sought support from a letter opinion from the Attorney General dated, I think, the same day. And that letter, the guidance given by the Attorney General in that letter was that local law enforcement are, may issue petty misdemeanor citations for violations of the Public Health Act. And because the orders given in the, in the public health order from the governor in response to the COVID pandemic were promulgated under the authority of the Public Health Act, and just for your understanding, the Public Health Act actually has a provision in it that says violations of the Public Health Act can be cited as a petty misdemeanor, up to $100 fine or up to six months in jail or both. And so because that, because the order is pursuant to the act and the act allows for the penalty, it can, petty misdemeanor citations can be issued on the basis of a violation of an order, in other words, the mask mandate. And furthermore, because it's, all peace officers, including local municipal police officers, may cite for violations of state law, therefore petty misdemeanors may be issued by local law enforcement for violations of the mask mandate. The directive of the governor goes a little bit farther than that. It actually looks to the All Hazards Management, All Hazards Emergency Management Act. And there's a provision in that act which says that when an emergency has been issued by the governor or promulgated or declared, whatever the terminology is, that local jurisdictions shall enforce the orders of the governor or any orders given under the governor's authority. And so in the interpretation of the governor, the Public Health Act orders that were done during response to COVID by the Department of Health are, I suppose, in their interpretation, orders given by the governor or under the governor's authority. And therefore, we are required in that interpretation to enforce the mask mandate. The directive then goes on to say that enforcement should involve issuing citations to those individuals who are determined to be violating the mask mandate in an intentional fashion. About a week after that, there was a letter response drafted and submitted by the city attorney's office for the city of Hobbs. The city attorney brought up several concerns about specifically the question of criminal enforcement of this provision. And I want to be clear that, to my reading of his letter response to the Attorney General, he is not questioning the authority of the governor to issue a mask mandate. The governor's powers are broad under a public health emergency. But he takes a specific exception to the question of whether this can be enforced through criminal citations. And he, without going into the nitty-gritty of the legal arguments, basically he's saying the Public Health Act never contemplated this type of action. It would violate separation of powers. It would be unconstitutionally vague. He also raises a concern about characterizing this as a citation, given that, as I stated a moment ago, it would potentially have a fine or a penalty of six months in prison. And finally, he questioned the wisdom of encouraging further potentially antagonistic interactions between police and the citizens in a time when we're having a national conversation about issues of police brutality. I will say that, in my estimation, many of the concerns raised are well-taken, in my opinion. Before I close my comments here, I just want to make the council aware of one case that is out there. It's, we'll talk about the litigation in a minute, but this case, I think, bears directly on the action contemplated in this item. This is State versus Hicks. This is a decision that was done by the Supreme Court, and what it was, was the Attorney General obtained a writ of mandamus against the mayor of Grants, New Mexico, based on his conduct. I'm sure many of you read about it in the paper. He was very vocal. He said, you know, this is unconstitutional, don't enforce this, I'm going to direct city staff not to pay attention to it, businesses, please stay open. In fact, he went so far, I think, as to say, I'm going to instruct the police to obstruct the state police as they try and enforce the mandate. What ended up happening was that the Supreme Court agreed with the Attorney General and issued a writ of mandamus. A writ of mandamus is basically an order from a court to a government official that says, knock it off and do your job. Okay? And so this, it's a serious thing. You don't want to get a writ of mandamus. And basically, it prohibited him from issuing any directives or any kind of instruction to anybody that would encourage them to violate the public health order. Now, I don't say, remind you of this case to draw any kind of comparison. I'm not saying that what we're considering today is, is the same as what the mayor of Grants was doing. I think it's different. But I want to make everybody aware of the kind of tools that the state does have at its disposal to chastise municipalities and local jurisdictions that it determines are not following the public health orders. With that, I will stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Counselor Robach, this is your matter. You still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I've got comments that will address five and six. I'm just going to do them all at one time for sake of brevity. Before I make my case, I do want to address the issue of motivation. I'm not motivated to bring these directives for partisan gain, which has been, which has been discussed greatly. My whole purpose to be on City Council is to help our community move forward. I do not know the governor personally, and I'm not in a position to judge her motives or heart. As we debate, I do encourage everyone to keep partisanship out of the discussion, if at all possible. Also, based on one's perspectives and one's values, two people, two good people can look at the same data and come to vastly different conclusions. Listening and sharing your opinion are both equally important in productive debate. Consent of the governed is the foundation this country is built on. Allow me to quote the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." We have a pretty good system determining consent of the governed in our state and in our country called laws. Our elected officials in legislatures make these laws. This is the system through which we establish consent of the governed, even when there is some disagreement among the governed. When we give up these rights for any reason, consent must be established. The seatbelt law, I think, is a great example of this, where there's disagreement, but we have created consent. Executives who execute the law are given emergency power so that when there's no time to gather consent of the governed, important decisions can be made in a timely manner. While we certainly have a continuing crisis on our hands, the emergency part has passed. There has been ample time for the governor to make her case to the people and get their support through the lawmaking body. There is considerable evidence the governor is working outside of her authority granted by law. These actions are outside the consent of the governed. Originally, the message from the governor was, we need to flatten the curve to keep healthcare systems from being overrun. The specter of people contracting the disease and not being able to receive medical attention was the motivating factor to create emergency orders, calling for New Mexicans to shelter in place. Now that the curve has been flattened, there doesn't seem to be a clear goal, which has created extreme uncertainty for our businesses and families. In the time since the first order, we have learned a lot more about COVID-19 and what risk it imposes on individuals and our community. We have an educated constituency that should decide what risk, what, excuse me, that should decide what risk level we want to take upon ourselves, in the same way that we have addressed other public health issues that have faced our community and our nation. Instead of going to the people and asking how we want to deal with the situation, she has imposed her values on us. The cost of the governor's orders on the people of Roswell has been high. The damage being done to small business has been discussed at length, but I fear the worst damage is being done to our children and families. When people are under prolonged financial and social stress, they make poor decisions. These decisions can and do lead to domestic violence, child abuse, and drug use. There isn't a single child whose development hasn't been impaired due to the orders from the governor. How important is it for kids to swim, to play sports, to go to school in their development? How important are social gatherings for a child's well-being? Childhood is short, and every day counts. My wife and I have been fortunate to be involved with Royal Family Kids Camp, an incredible volunteer program that gives life-changing, positive childhood memories and hope to foster kids. These are the kind of kids that statistically grow up to go to prison, to become teen mothers, and to suffer from addiction. That camp should be happening now, but because of our governor, those life-changing moments aren't happening for our most vulnerable population. And I think this is the real rub. This camp could have easily happened safely. The organizers were willing to modify their program in order to meet any guidelines to make sure these kids received life-changing experiences. Our baseball league here in Roswell was willing to go to extreme measures to keep baseball going. Our city is willing to take an abundance of caution in opening the pool for kids during the summer. But our governor has said no to all these things. Good leadership reaches out across the aisle and brings people together. Good leadership finds compromise that works for everybody. Good leadership brings people to the table who have different viewpoints in order to find the best, most creative solution. Our governor, however, has not once asked for input from the city of Roswell or of Chavas County. She has rebuffed input from our legislators. Instead of working with local communities to get a, to get a plan that we all have at least some level of buy-in for, she has forced her values on our community without consent. That, to me, seems more like dictatorship than good leadership. There is another philosophy that has made our country strong, in addition to the consent of the governed, and that is separation of powers. Not only do we have executive, legislative, and judicial separation, we also have federal, state, and local separation. So now, as it is our duty to protect our community welfare, as we best see fit as an independently elected body, and it being the desire of the governed for us to take this matter up in this council, we bring forth these two directives for the city manager for consideration by the governing body in response to the governor's orders. In closing, I quote President Ronald Reagan, who famously reminded us that freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction, and said, if we don't protect our freedom, one day we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was like in the United States where men were free. I believe we can protect our freedom and take reasonable precautions due to COVID. However, if you make me choose one or the other, I will take freedom before safety. I yield.
Thank you, Council. Before I go to the council for comments, questions, or discussion, I have three individuals who have signed up in person to speak on this matter. I've asked for those.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Counselor Robach, if you would like your comments for the record, would you please state that for the record?
I would like my comments for the record, please.
Thank you.
And you will provide a copy of those comments to Ms. Call. All right. So we have three individuals who have signed up to speak. They, Dr. Chris, and Alan Dunhill, and Michael Colker, if they could come forward. And my understanding is we have no one online who has requested to speak. So we got, so sir, what I'll ask for you to do is state your name, your So we got, so sir, what I'll ask for you to do is state your name, your address. You will have three minutes to speak. Ms. Call, I don't have a clock here. Do you have one? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. My name is Karasimir Christov. I'm a family nurse practitioner and a doctor chiropractic here in Roswell. We are at 602 East College, and we have not closed a single day since this whole thing has started. So before I get into the mask discussion, I just want to give you a couple of numbers that maybe people are not aware of. Currently, I think we're looking at about four million cases, 3.8 million cases of the COVID, with reported death about 140,000, give or take. To compare, 2009, the swine flu, many of you probably remember, we had about 60.8 million cases, almost 61 million cases, 2009. I don't think any of these drastic measures were implemented at that time. The influenza that we face every year, it's roughly 35 to 45 million cases every year. So 2017, 2018, we had 45 million cases. 2018, 2019, we have about 35.5 million cases. We're faced with those viruses every single year, and I don't see our country shutting down or masking everyone to respond to this. Let those numbers sink in. Forty-five million versus four million, and those cases can be a little questionable how they get reported. On the mask issue, I have a few articles that I found that are basically meta-analysis and systematic reviews. What that means is, they looked at a lot of articles, and they drew a conclusion based on those. So one of those says, "Findings from a systematic review of 172 studies," basically says, "One meter physical distance works, two meters can work. Masks can work, however," quote, "none of these interventions afforded complete protection from infection, and their optimum role might need risk assessment from randomized control trials, which were not done." Randomized control trials are the most accurate trials out there. So yes, they can help, but there's no absolute protection from those things. Another article that I found really interesting talked about the homemade mask, which governor says it's completely acceptable to have. Well, here's the thing on homemade masks. A protective mask may reduce the likelihood of infection. Thus, masks, no matter how efficient and how good of a seal, can have a minimal effect on transmission of diseases. However, these masks would provide the wearers little to no protection for microorganisms from people who are infected. Bandanas don't work. According to the governor, they do work. So where's the truth to that? And I would like to finish with the current position of the World Health Organization.
All right. Three minutes are expired.
Okay.
Thank you.
They're still not mandating masks for, for healthy people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, I have, and if I've got the last name incorrect, I apologize. Alan Dunhill? Okay. I'm sorry. Misreading of the writing. Go ahead, sir. Come on up. State your name, state your address, and you will have three minutes.
My name, my name's Alan Dunn. I live here in Roswell. I vote in Roswell. I voted for some of you folks. Appreciate your leadership, and I want to support this man and these two resolutions. Number five is what you're considering. Thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate the doctor's comments. I think that what's going on in our country, our state, and our city is a fiasco. I believe it's politically motivated. I think if you do any research at all, you'll find that the science does not support the governor's agenda. There's more testing, so there's more positive cases. The death toll continues to drop. There's no premise for this. I believe that she is imposing her will as a queen, for crying out loud. I don't think there's room for authoritarian government. I want to agree with the directive that the city manager would not enforce the emergency orders of our governor, whose name I will not call. She leaves a bad taste in my mouth. I hope this is recorded. Mr. Nip, I hope this passes, and you do well with it. I know our cities suffered. I know that our residents have suffered. I know I have, and you have too, probably. But more than anything, to make a stipulation that a restaurant can open and then shut them down with no justification, it's just putting people out of business. It's absurd. I've got comments for number six, too, but I'll wait.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. I'll call on you again when we get to six. Mr. Colker, you'll come forward, state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
Thank you, guys, for letting me speak, and thank you, guys, for your leadership during this time. My name is Michael Colker. I live at 5149 Cotton Road. Is that all I had to say?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, sorry, I don't really claim to be smart enough to have claims about science in general or how the mask works, but I do think, to my mind, the most pressing question that rises to my mind when I think about COVID-19 pandemic, and this question in particular, is the question of power. Who has it and who should have it? In New Mexico, it's clear who has wielded power these past few months, and it's becoming ever clearer who should wield it. Governor Grisham, in an effort to take responsibility for the well-being of New Mexicans, has extended her executive power over every aspect of our lives, as can be seen in a few examples. First, she unilaterally exercised power over our religious rights, telling us how we are to worship, or whether we are to worship at all, in direct contradiction to both the United States and New Mexico Bill of Rights, which state respectively, "That no law shall infringe the right of the people peaceably to assemble, and that no preference shall be given by law to any mode of worship." Second, she has unilaterally exercised power over our right to provide for ourselves, our families, and our community, despite the right of New Mexicans, again prescribed in our Bill of Rights, of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and of seeking and obtaining safety and happiness. Third, she has unilaterally exercised power over our right to send our children to our schools, despite the demand in Article VII of New Mexico's Constitution that "A uniform system of free public schools sufficient for the education of all the children of all of school age in the state shall be established and maintained," and the stipulation in the same article that the period of attendance be prescribed by law, not the governor. The governor has taken upon herself responsibility for our well-being. In doing so, she has taken our right to do, to seek it for ourselves. There can be no separation of right and responsibility. If one is given a right, they are necessarily given the responsibility to choose what way they will use it. To quote the wise Uncle Ben, "With great power comes great responsibility." But Uncle Sam and Governor Grisham have been telling us quite different things lately. You can have the rights, but we will handle the responsibility. They do not say they will take our rights, but when they take responsibility from us, they are taking the same thing. The responsibility for our lives and safety does not lie in Grisham's hand. She's not our governess, nor are we her ward. She is our governor, and we are the men and women from whom she derives power. No one person has the wisdom, nor should they have the power, to provide for and protect the lives of every New Mexican, nor every citizen of Roswell. That power squarely rests in our hands, and in the hands of every citizen of Roswell in this state. As New Mexico's Bill of Rights states, echoing the United States' Bill of Rights, "All persons are born equally free and have certain natural, inherent, and inalienable rights, among which are the rights of enjoying and defending life and liberty, of acquiring and possessing and protecting property, and of seeking and obtaining safety and happiness." It is our responsibility and our right to seek our own safety and happiness.
Sir, that's the three minutes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Counselors, I have no one else wishing to speak on item five from the audience. Any questions or comments, counselors? I have Counselor Oropesa. Counselor Oropesa, you got it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I keep hearing the accusation that the governor unilaterally made a decision. That is not true. I pulled up the New Mexico State Statutes, Chapter 12, Article 10A, which addresses a public health emergency response, and 1210A-5 declaring a state of public health emergency terminating the emergency. And this one states, "A state of public health emergency may be declared by the governor upon the occurrence of a public health emergency. Prior to a declaration of state of public health emergency, the governor shall consult with the Secretary of Health. The governor shall authorize the Secretary of Health, the Secretary of Public Safety, and the Director to coordinate a response to the public health emergency." Section B states, "A state of public health emergency shall be declared in an executive order that specifies," and again, "an executive order becomes a temporary law," "that specifies the nature of the public health emergency, the political subdivisions or geographic areas affected by the public health emergency, the conditions that cause the public health emergency, the expected duration to the public health emergency, if less than 30 days, the public health officials needed to assist in the coordination of a public health emergency response, and any other provisions necessary to implement the executive order." Section C says, "A declaration of state of public health emergency shall not abrogate any disease reporting requirements set forth in the Public Health Act." D, "A declaration of a state of public health emergency shall be terminated by (one), the governor, after consultation with the Secretary of Health, upon determining that there is no longer a public health emergency, or (two), automatically after 30 days unless renewed by the governor, after consultation with the Secretary of Health." And number E, "Upon the termination of state of public health emergency, the Secretary of Health shall consult with the Secretary of Public Safety and the Director to ensure public safety during termination procedures." So the fact that we are blaming the governor of unilaterally making this kind of decisions is totally wrong, and is totally false. If anybody sees the governor when she, she addresses the, this issue, you will see that there's, the Secretary of, of, or Dr. Scarcy, and then she has some other individuals there as well. So it's not the governor that takes it upon herself to do it. And unfortunately, this is a political issue, whether we like to admit it or not, because we don't say much about the, the president and the way he's acting. And had the president taken, taken action early on, maybe we wouldn't have been on this type of situation that we're in right now. I'm sorry, Counselor Best, but that's the truth, as far as I'm concerned. He wasn't able to lead us, as good leaders do, so he left it up to the governors. And so she is doing what she believes is the right thing to do, and I believe she is doing the right thing. Even though I don't like to wear this mask, because it's burdensome, but I would rather see people alive than I would dead. And as far as, as far as constitution rights are concerned, yeah, you can, you can say, "You're infringing on my, my constitutional rights." What about our God-given right to live? I think, I think God-given rights are stronger than the constitutional rights. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Best, Counselor Kenner. That exhausts my list at this time. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
So, Counselor Oropesa, we were asked specifically not to bring political into this, specifically. I wasn't going to. I'm not going to. Shame on you for doing that. Counselor Robach, I am very...
Wait, wait a minute. I'm going to, at this point, counselors, I'm going to interject here. We will not chastise each other personally while I am the presiding officer. I will not allow it. I should have spoken earlier. I, I regret failing to do so. I will say emphatically, we will not take personal action against one another. Counselor? Counselor Best has the floor. She will have the floor. But I will ask you all to restrain, at this time, from making any comments to each other or about each other during your presentations. And I apologize for not articulating that at the very beginning. My failure. Counselor Best, you have the floor. Continue.
Okay. I'll start over again. We were asked not to make this political. None of us up here want to make this political. We were voted in, I can't remember, of the non-political. We sit up here as citizens, helping our citizens of Roswell. This is not a political seat. This has gotten political within the United States terribly. The numbers are skewed from state to state to national. No one can decide what the hell's going on. I am very proud of Counselor Robach for stepping forward and recognizing that our city has hotter fires to put out. Our domestic violence, our thievery, our court system needs to continue on, our fire department, police department, sheriff department, everybody needs to continue on with life. To make us live in life, we have to continue life. I don't want to say we're animals. We're the farthest thing from it, because we have thumbs, and that's why God gave us thumbs, but this is a herd immunity situation. We have lost less lives to this COVID-19 than we ever did to the flu strains, and the flu strains change from year to year to year. Are we going to run from this from year to year to year? I hope not. I hope we all get immune to it, we put our heads down, and we go on with life. There is no reason for us to stop the way we live. If you feared of this COVID-19, stay home. Plenty of people in this town have offered to deliver you your goods to your house so you don't ever have to leave the house. There is no reason for bullying. Bullying is not going to get us anywhere. Counselor Robach, I applaud you for bringing this forward. I think we have more important fish to fry. On number five, the directive from the city manager to not enforce the public health of mask, you know, she wants us to pay $100 or go sit in jail for six months, when she's letting people out of jail in Santa Fe that shouldn't be let out of jail. So you're going to stick me in jail with these COVID people if they're COVID. That she's not making sense in the decisions that she's making. Other governors are not making sense. Everybody is feared, and that is because of the public and the media. They want you to be feared. I don't have a specific speech for this. Everybody's going to have to make their own decisions. I stand behind Counselor Robach and his decision to let our manager protect his people in the city, and that's what he does, and that's what we do up here. We protect our people. I'll yield at this time.
All right. I have Counselor Kenner. That exhausts my list at this time. I have Counselor Stubbs, Counselor... I have Counselor Stubbs, Counselor Foster, Counselor, hang on, let me get this. Hang on, Counselor Kennard. Counselor Orpesa, understand I will seek to see if anyone else wishes before calling on you. But Counselor Kennard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank everybody who contacted me either by email or phone. I think that unlike other areas in our state, I'm going to support this based on the outpouring of the people that have contacted me. And that's what I base this decision on, so thank you.
All right, thank you. I have Counselor Stubbs, Counselor Foster. Counselor Orpesa is asked to speak again. I will see if anyone else who has not spoken wishes to do so. Counselor Stubbs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I bring in my own remarks, I'd like to read part of a letter to the editor that was published in the Roswell Daily Record last week on the seventeenth. I'm assuming this went into newspapers across the state because it's written by Rob Black. And Rob is the president and CEO of the New Mexico Association of Commerce and Industry. The Association of Commerce and Industry is the state chamber of commerce. It's the main lobbyist for businesses in New Mexico. And they're very well-respected. It's an organization that has a large board of directors. So I know that this was approved by them before it was published. I'm not reading the entire thing, but in part it does say, "We know that state mandated lockdowns and stay-at-home orders are effective at slowing the speed of the virus, but they come at a great cost to our economy, our local businesses, and our residents' mental health. But there is a much easier and more cost-effective way to slow the spread and stop of COVID-19. Wear a mask. We must wear a mask every time we are outside our homes. It is a matter of life and death for many. And the very least that we can do is keep our small businesses open, our workers healthy, and our economy moving forward." Then he goes on to say, "All of us must work together, our local law enforcement, businesses, and citizens supporting each other." I think he says it very well and much better than I would have said. But I think I first want to recognize that there's not a person in Roswell, probably not in the state of New Mexico, that hasn't been adversely affected by the current pandemic. We've been displaced, we've been inconvenienced and economically challenged. But the issue here, I don't think, is actually the mask or the order itself. I think it goes much deeper than that. This directive is telling me that the infectious disease doctors, virus researchers, epidemiologists, scientists, and medical providers are all wrong. And I can't think that this is a responsible action and we should be ignoring these facts. State statute does allow us to create policies that are stricter than the states, but in no way may we lessen their intent. This action would only exacerbate the situation, and I can't, for the life of me, see where this action will protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens as we're charged to do again by state statute. By specifically including the Roswell Police Department in this motion, I have to question if we have the rights to take away from them the duties and responsibilities that they have taken a sworn oath to uphold. I also heard Chief Smith recently say, and I quote this, I hope I'm correct, that we will answer every call and prioritize them as usual. I personally don't think that the problems are because of the governor, as been stated. It's because we have a lackadaisical attitude toward this deadly virus. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if he's on your agenda to call on, but I see the Assistant Chief of Police and our Fire Marshal. And if they are here to address us, I'd like to hear from them at some point.
The Deputy Chief is here because we are required to have a police officer, the chief, or his designee at all city council meetings, so that's why.
I'm sorry, I do know that. But if he would speak as to the police's position here-
If you wish to speak on this matter, Deputy Chief, Stanton?
I do have a statement that was prepared by the chief. That would be incorporated.
If you want to bring it on up, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. I have this statement that was prepared by the chief. It was already provided to the city staff as far as the police department's response and how we've been handling the current situation, the governor's mandates. If it's okay, I'm just going to read it verbatim so that none of it's misconstrued through my paraphrasing. The Roswell Police Department is a professional agency, which has always adhered to the industry standards beyond that of the state of New Mexico. Roswell Police Department aligns with national standards of operations and compliance. The governor has executed a mandate of wearing protective masks to combat the spread of COVID-19. The RPD personnel will comply with the order whilst conforming to the constraints of the United States Constitution and the laws of the New Mexico and the rules and regulations of the city of Roswell. The blow identifies the tenants, the blow identified tenants will undoubtedly mitigate the influence of the RPD officer's discretion regarding both response and enforcement actions. The RPD response to complaints lodged to this state COVID-19 complaint line will be as follows. We will respond if the officer is not involved in police activities such as investigations, training, calls for service, administrative duties relating to other duties as a police officer of the city of Roswell. Mask enforcement will be prioritized and placed in its appropriate place in the calls for service continuum for the city of Roswell. The officer will respond to complaints in a mobile unit without lights or siren and will adhere to all traffic devices and regulations. Upon contact, the officer will provide education to the subject of the complaints regarding the mandate and the goal of containment of the spread of the COVID-19. The officer may provide a mask to the subject of the complaint if he or she has one available. RPD understands that this mandate does not equate to a criminal event supplicating whether law enforcement officers have the authority to provide enforcement of a state health code. That's a big sticking point amongst the Chiefs Association right now, albeit the Attorney General has his own interpretation of it. The legal counsel provided by the municipal Chiefs Association has a little bit of a different opinion, which I don't want to speak to at this point, but that's where that comes from. And private vendors do have the right to require masks to be worn by their patrons, but mask-wearing is their sole responsibility to enforce. Supreme Court has not ruled whether mask mandates and subsequent enforcement is constitutional. Law enforcement officers are not trained in the enforcement and prosecution of what New Mexico Public Health Code mandates. Under like circumstances, couldn't one argue that the New Mexico Health Code enforcement officers should be called to respond to assist law enforcement officers in these calls for services? Citations and subsequent prosecutions under the current mandate are beyond the training and experience, therefore the professional capabilities of the RPD, as we are trained in law enforcement and not public health code. It should be noted that RPD is suffering from a manning deficit, yet the city of Roswell is still the busiest per capita in the state of New Mexico. Roswell police personnel already adhere to the mask protocol when dealing with the public, civilian personnel wearing masks and having protective measures in place. Officers have the discretion as to when they will wear the mask in the course of their duties. And that's the letter as prepared by Chief Smith. I'd be happy to help clarify any of that if anybody has any kind of questions.
You want to, for the record, miss call, you want to include that? So if you'll provide her a copy of that statement, she can incorporate it into the minutes of this meeting. Counselor Stubbs, you still have the floor. All right, at this point, I have Counselor Foster. And then I have Counselor Orpesa, unless anyone who has not yet spoken chooses to do so. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I am not opposed to wearing a mask, but I'm also opposed to mandates that haven't shown to me that they are true to what they're saying. Meaning, I'm not always so sure that our governor is acting in the best interest of our state, more in the best interest of her party. And I know we're not supposed to get political, but my next, from March 13th on, 132 days, we've been living under 30-day emergency orders. Someplace, sometime, it takes me that we should enact our legislative. Oh, by the way, they were enacted. They went up there, they wanted to address this. The governor would not allow them to address this. So in other words, she is not being, we're not giving her consent. She's taking consent away from us to be governed. And she continually shows this. Instead of asking us to work with her, she's telling us what we're supposed to be doing. Our governor showed great contempt for our court system by not responding to the lawsuit brought to her by the Restaurant Association until the judge ruled, and then suddenly she jumps in with the Supreme Court. That, to me, shows that she doesn't care a rule law. She wants to do it her way and however way she's going to do it. We don't have the power to bring the Supreme Court in as quick as she did, but to have them rule within hours after a district court had stayed tells me that it was already planned. So she didn't, just showed contempt, I think, for the courts. And today, she shows two pictures of people, one in Taos, wearing masks outside, walking, one in Hobbs, people sitting down at a restaurant, eating in family groups, following the CDC recommended recommendations. But she showed those as two polar opposites of what we should be doing. Well, they were following CDC recommendations. Just because she says we should not have dine-in, and I did hear our environmental secretary list some statistics. And as my dad had always said, statistics don't lie, just the people that use them. You can, and as we saw tonight, we've had statistics. Swine flu, 60 million people got it. We did not revert to this type of fear mongering, because that's what this is. It's trying to scare people into submission, ruining our economy, and not really caring. I think that if we worked together, we could solve this a lot easier than just having mandates every 30 days telling us exactly how we're going to, how we have to act. Bring in our legislature, let our legislature decide. Then we can figure this out. Don't have it, and it is, supposedly she's taking counsel, but there again, some of it, like we've seen, we can get counsel, we can get statistics that say everything under the sun. And I see this more as fear. Her actions, her actions by not responding to the Restaurant Association shows me she doesn't, she has contempt for our system and she doesn't care about our constitution. So that is why I'm for this. I'm also for this because I don't think we need to waste our time and our police's time by handling little cases of masks. We have bigger issues to worry about. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any Counselor wishing to speak who has not yet done so? If, Counselor Peterson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sitting back here thinking of why you would put this directive in there. And the only thing is to make it political. That's all the reason to put this in here. The, this directive is going to put Mr. Neibert in a bad spot. If the court rules against him, is he going to go to jail? Are you guys going to go to jail? One of you guys going to go to jail for him? I don't know. I doubt it. You might bail him out, maybe. But I'm not going to support this because of that reason.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing otherwise? Counselor Orpesa, you have the floor a second time. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for interrupting the discussion there. But it, you know, to me, it gets tiresome when a Counselor speaks and you've got Counselors rolling their eyes, ugly gestures, and so forth, like she's doing right now.
Counselor, same thing.
Well, I'm just telling you.
I understand, but this is the same thing I'm asking you to do.
But I'm hoping that you will put a stop to it for everybody, not just-
I interjected in the middle of another Counselor's presentation. I'm asking, obviously I do not control any of you. I am asking each of you to focus on the subject at hand and not each other. Let's focus on the debate, of the discussion, of the ideas, of the goals, and not on-
And I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
And I have been as respectful as I can, you know, through my eight years that I've been here. However, it does get tiresome. Especially when I go back and see the footage and I see who is rolling their eyes, who is sighing, and the gestures are going on and on and so forth, just to let you know. But I want to ask Joe just one, a question. Have you ever enforced the health order as far as masks are concerned?
Have we enforced the masks?
Have you personally gone out and have the order to be enforced?
No, not personally. The, what we have, and I spoke to the city council at the last meeting, is that we will enforce all laws and we rely upon the police department as far as that report stands as well, so.
And just what we heard, the, was it Deputy Chief?
Deputy Chief.
The letter that was written by Chief Smith.
Correct.
Basically, what I heard was that they are willing to enforce it in a prioritized manner.
That is correct. Our stance on that from the police department was is that we do not believe that a ticket would be written. It would be more education as far as understanding exactly what happened. So we take every call at the beginning as a welfare check, essentially is what we try to look at our call volume as. Hopefully that helps with that.
Well, what I'm driving at is we have enforced a face mask order from the very beginning. Am I right?
We have not. We have not went out and said that we would enforce that at a higher level of priority than what we are currently doing. So there has not been any statement from the city at any point in time that we would not enforce the public health order. I don't know if I can get you a better answer than that for that question because we've had, we have conversations on the health orders all the time. We are reacting to that since March. We've been reacting to each one of those. Every time the order changes, we try to react to that. Essentially, that is why three of our departments are still closed.
So what I'm asking, if this passes, which I know it will, are you going to mandate to Chief Smith to do away with what he- are you going to mandate to Chief Smith to do away with what he, what the deputy just, uh, read?
I, I've thought about this a little bit as far as when, uh, when, when these items were placed on the agenda as to how my, what my response should be for this. Uh, I've remained away from giving a full response because I will lean on my staff to have that conversation. My job is to work for the full city council though. And as far as the full city council, when they take a decision, I take that very seriously as to how we can meet that expectation with that. So a, as far as, I, I think that, um, you know, this, this, this is going into more of the mask, but I think it's a little bit larger issue about how to enforce the public health orders and what our step is. So I report to the full city council and so I'm not, I don't have a full answer for you for that question because I would lean on our, the city attorney, the police chief, uh, all of those that are responsible to help meet those expectations of the city council at that time.
Do you not think that you have a responsibility to the community to follow the law?
Yes, sir, I do. It is my responsibility to follow the, follow the, the law.
And since the, the governor has issued an executive order, even though it's an executive order, it's still a temporary law? So you don't feel that you should follow it, even if the council...
No, sir, I'm not saying that. Uh, and again, I think, uh, Mr. Patterson, uh, covered in, in great detail as far as what the, what the, uh, what the health or, how the health orders play into the law, what the statutory requirements are, and then what our response is. I believe there are some, uh, there are some questions that remain on the table as far as what, how to interpret that. But I, I believe that, uh, we would enforce the law, any, any law within the state of New Mexico. And I, I'm not gonna, I will not be able to give you a better answer than that, uh, for the, for the line of questions because I, I don't operate, I don't operate autonomously. I operate based upon the vision and the direction of the city council, and I rely heavily upon the professionals of, of those departments that I rely upon, so...
So if six counselors in this council were to give you a directive that is against the law, whether it's steal, kill, whatever it may be, because six counselors decided that you need to do it, are you gonna do it?
If I believe it is incorrect, I will not do it.
And you don't think this is incorrect?
I cannot answer that today.
That tells me no.
So, but my, my, my point is, is that I will, I will enforce that and, and that, that would be a different conversation that we would have.
See, and the point that I'm trying to make is we're putting you in a very difficult situation like Counselor Peterson said. For you to make those kind of decisions is unfair to you. Because you have a responsibility to this community as the police does. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Why am I not surprised? Counselor Robach, uh, before I call on you, anyone else wishing to speak who has not yet spoken? Counselor Moore, you have the floor.
I am deeply troubled kind of by this because I feel like that we are... How do we decide, okay, this law I'm not gonna follow? Oh, this law, okay, I, we don't like this one, so we're not gonna follow that one. So I, that's why I struggle with this a little bit. Now, I do understand about decriminalizing it. I don't think, you know, that kind of, I get that part of it. And it being a choice, you know, and those things like, but I, I have trouble with us saying, "We don't like this temporary law mandate or whatever, so we're not gonna follow today." Okay, we might change our mind tomorrow. We come together next meeting, okay, you know, we like this part of it, so we'll follow that. So I struggle with that because I feel like that people, leadership are in place, whether you like them or not, whether they're your party or not, whether you like some decisions that they like. You know, if they're doing what you wanted to do, then you like them. And then if they don't, then you talk about them. So it's not, it's not about that. But they're, they're, they're elected and they do the best that they can, just like us. A lot of times we make decisions a lot of people don't like. A lot of times we say things or do things that a lot of people don't like. And that is, that is like, we make the hard, you know, that's why, uh, Mayor says we're here to make the hard decisions. And so I struggle with giving, like, give that one power on you and then you go tell the police who, who, to follow law that, not to follow a law. And I, so I struggle with that. So I really, I have, I, I'm struggling with understanding the importance of wanting not to follow a law or however you mandate. I'm gonna use that word because it's not a law, so... Um, because I was told by a lady in the store, unless, it's not a law, so I'm not gonna do it. That's on you. You know, stay home. Like, like, against the Council, best to stay home. Um, so I just think that, I don't know if we're, I feel like we're reaching, you know, right now. I know it's been a struggle for the state. It's been a struggle for each and every one of us. And Robach talking about his children, and I spoke to my boss about not going back to work. It's, it's, you know, because, because it's so much unknown. If we knew, like they say about the flu and all that, we know there's a, there's a shot you can get for the flu, but there's not a, there's, this is so unknown. That's why I, I, I try to get an understanding because, you know, you, like, you, like somebody was saying about statistic. You can get a statistic to say whatever you needed, needed to say to back up whatever you need to back up. It works, you know, whatever you needed to say. And so I, so, like I said, one article, the mask, wear masks. Don't wear a mask, it's gonna kill you. Wear, you know, so all those kind of things, I get that. But I just don't understand how are we gonna tell the police not to follow a mandate? So I struggle with that very seriously. So I don't, I don't know about this. I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I want to generally, not specifically, address the, the political issue. I think there's, we need to draw a clear line between political and partisan. Um, this is a political process, um, and there's no way for it not to be political. Um, partisan, on the other hand, seeking advantage for your party is, is different. And I will, um, even though we do have a secret ballot, I will go on the record and say, "One of the saddest days of my life is when the Republican Party nominated Donald Trump to, for president." Um, that was a line that we crossed that it's gonna be really hard for this nation to go back from. Um, and so I don't have a, um, and that, that probably didn't make me popular to some people, but that's okay. Um, uh, this is not my purpose, and I can only speak for myself, my purpose of this is not, is not political. I certainly, I, I certainly would assume and hope that the governor is doing what she thinks is best uh, for the state. And, but thinking what's best and what is best can be two different things. And we have to use the wisdom that God has given us to make our, our best decisions. I think in, in, um, in response to the concerns for, uh, Mr. Neb, I think one of the reasons why we need to do this is because it needs to be on us, the political body, and not the staff to decide, um, about this directive. Because there are a lot of our constituents who, who, who disagree with this and, and don't want to see it done. I want to make one statement about masks. Um, uh, we're not telling people not to wear masks. We're not telling people to ignore, uh, the, the governor's things in this directive. We are simply saying that we're not gonna use our resources and our time to enforce it. That, that's a big difference. Um, I wish that through this hundred and however many days you said it's been, I wish there would have been a time when the, when the governor would have, uh, reached out and made an effort to bring our communities where life happens into this conversation. Or these communities. She hasn't brought ours in. Maybe she's brought others in, I don't know. Um, and I, that would, that would, that's a much preferred methodology than, than having to go through this political process to, uh, to apply pressure for this, for the sake of our constituents. But in no way, um, i- i- am I in a place where, uh, where I want to say that I, I know why the governor's doing what she's doing. I don't know. Um, I, but in, in absence of knowing, I'm gonna assume that she's trying to do the best job she can, just like all leaders do. Um, the last thing I want to, uh, want to address is, um, uh, the issue of, and this is, there certainly is a lot of unclarity about this legally, and this is why this is here too, is like, um, is the mandate a law? What is it? And there, it just, we're in uncharted territory. We don't know. We simply don't know. And, and it will be, it might be decided in the courts. This time around, it might not. Um, but I, I cannot, uh, the, the, uh, the Democratic Party, it's party of the governor, controls both, both houses. And certainly, um, certainly the governor, um, could reach out to those party members of her party, uh, to get something through the, uh, through the legislate, legislation. And at, at that point, this becomes a mute argument, a mute point. Um, and I think that is the appropriate way to do things. Um, it is what's made this country strong, and we need to continue to stick with the things that have made this country what it is, and this state what it is. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to address those things, and I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have no one else on my list. At this time, I will call for a roll call vote. A roll call vote. A yes or aye. Excuse me, counselors. A yes or aye directs the city manager and staff, including Roswell Police Department, to take no action to enforce the governor's public health orders relating to COVID-19 pandemic. A yes or aye. A no or nay rejects that direction and allows staff to operate as they have been. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kinnard?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
No.
Counselor Orpesa?
No.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Counselors, um, I will ask for a brief indulgence. I would like to candidly dis, uh, present to the voters my thoughts on this. I did not speak during the debate because it is your decision to make, and I will not try to sway you. If it had come down to a five-five tie, I would have voted for this. My reasons are however quite narrow. On July 3rd at 5:03 in the evening, I received an email on my mayor's email page from Victor Reyes staffer for the governor directing myself as the mayor to respond to their office with our enforcement plans to enforce the governor's public health orders. On that date is the day of the Attorney General letter, which I provided a copy to you. That actual letter did not surface until Wednesday, I believe, the 9th. At that time, if you read the letter, the Attorney General states that local law enforcement may enforce. It is not a requirement. It is a may. Subsequent to that letter, the city attorney for the city of Hobbs, Mr. Cortez, I believe is his last name, wrote a detailed response, a copy which was provided to me within a few days, in which excellent, I believe, and very cogent points were raised about the validity of the order as a criminally enforceable action. The governor's position is that individuals can be forced to pay a fine or be incarcerated if they willingly fail to comply. There is some points raised in the city attorney's letter which raises serious questions, as yet unresolved, as to whether that is truly authorized by the state constitution or state statute. I believe to put Roswell personnel in an enforcement role for a statute that has not been resolved by the Supreme Court puts them in an awkward and difficult position. Until such time as the courts give us clarity, I think it's inappropriate for local law enforcement or any other portion of the staff to attempt to enforce through citation or possibly arrest this action. Once direction comes, unambiguous, clear direction comes from the Supreme Court, then I think we will have to comply with whatever is said. But at this time, the waters are murky, and I think we are best suited to await clarity and stand on the sidelines. That is mo, only my position. I simply wanted to share with all of you. I appreciated the debate. I know it got, uh, significantly, uh, difficult at times, but I appreciate your professionalism and your commitment to this community. On that, move to item number six. Counselor Robach.
Sorry, I gotta find my agenda. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I move that we approve a directive to the city manager to investigate litigation options against the governor of the state of New Mexico for damages to the city of Roswell caused by emergency orders, uh, concerning COVID-19.
I have a motion by Counselor Robach and a second by Counselor Kinnard to instruct the city manager to pursue any and all matter of relief from the governor and the state of New Mexico through any and all channels, including potential litigation for damages, including civil rights violations resulting from restrictions imposed by the governor's public health orders relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is that correct, Counselor? I just wanted to make sure I quoted the right...
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Parker, I mean, Mr. Patterson, I'm sorry. Did you, oh, I got the second from Counselor Kinnard. Did you want to address the litigation world where we're at right now and kind of bring the council up to speed?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I have been taking a look at some of the stuff that's been happening this week, catching up on litigation. And I mean, it's flying fast. There were literally things being filed this afternoon that I was trying to peruse on the way over here. Um, so there's kind of, I'll start, okay, I'll start with the case of Legacy Church, which is the one that's pretty much over by now, at least for the time being. That was the one where, uh, there was a challenge in federal court to the, uh, prohibitions on houses of worship, which in, you'll remember early on, were completely prohibited from, uh, any congregations. Later, that was changed. But there was a free exercise, uh, type of challenge under federal law in federal court, basically arguing that the public health orders, at least as to that portion of it, as it applied to churches, was a violation of the free exercise of religion under the First Amendment. Uh, Judge Browning in, uh, federal court wrote a hundred-page response to this in which he pretty much demolished this argument. Uh, he upheld, at least as a matter of federal law, the authority of the governor to issue these types of orders, and also held that, uh, it was not a violation of free exercise for them, for the pu, for the governor to close the churches. Uh, and it has to do with some intricacies of how, uh, the First Amendment has been interpreted by the Supreme Court over the years. Uh, so that one's pretty much done at this point. Uh, two cases that are filed in state court challenging the public health orders under state law are currently pending. Um, both the Legacy Church and these two that are pending right now are for what's called a, a permanent injunction. They start with a request for a TRO, a temporary restraining order, and then seek, in the long run, a permanent injunction, basically preventing the governor and the Secretary of Health from applying the laws or the orders that are issued pursuant to the Public Health Act and the Public Health Emergency Response Act and various other ones that they, it's kind of a grab bag. They take different powers from different acts and put them together into one order and then issue it. So, uh, so in the two cases that are challenging under New Mexico law, they're local, not local, they're private businesses, uh, that are basically arguing that, uh, various provisions are either unlawful, they're what's called arbitrary and capricious, meaning basically irrational, that they're drawing irrational distinctions between different types of business, like saying that, you know, for example, in one of them, they're arguing that the, the recent directive to close indoor dining is irrational because other, uh, businesses which are, uh, according, are alleged in lawsuit equally dangerous in terms of transmission are allowed to open at a limited capacity. That's an arbitrary distinction. Doesn't make any sense. That's how it's alleged. Uh, and further, they're arguing that, uh, very close reading of these statutes, that the governor does not necessarily have all the powers that she claims that she does. It gets very convoluted because, as I alluded to, what the governor and the, uh, Secretary of Health have done, have taken, there's a whole bunch of different, uh, act... health have done, have taken, there's a whole bunch of different acts out there. I referenced earlier the All Hazards Emergency Management Act, there's the Public Health Act, there's the Public Health Emergency Response Act, so there's a bunch of them, and they all have different powers. And so, what the state lawsuits are doing is kind of trying to draw distinctions between them, and say, you can't use this one to enforce that one, or use powers under this one to get me for violating that one. And so that's kind of the gist of it. And the governor's position, and I'll do a little bit of damage to a nuanced argument here, but basically, when, when we declare a public health emergency, all of our powers are emergency powers and can be enforced as emergency powers. Now, where that comes out as a matter of state law, we'll have to wait and see. As a matter of procedure, the lawyers out there will really enjoy the way this has gone down, and it's also been kind of interesting for the public because of the way that it happened. And we'll remember, earlier this week, there was a temporary restraining order issued in one of the cases, then immediately kicked out by the Supreme Court. For you procedure walks out there, basically what happened was that the, in that case, they asked for a temporary restraining order. The state, the state's response was not deemed to be a, quote, "responsive" pleading by the judge, so he entered the TRO, the temporary restraining order, without really getting into the merits of it, he deemed it, oh, he didn't respond, so I'm entering the temporary restraining order. And then, the governor and the secretary of health went to the Supreme Court and requested, they filed an emergency petition for a writ of superintending control. So these, this is one of these extraordinary writs that, in very rare circumstances, allow the Supreme Court to reach its hand down through the layers of the judiciary, down to the district court, and grab a case and pull it out. And basically, the idea being, this is a case that's so important, and their issues have got to be resolved, and the district court is kind of gone off their reservation doing something crazy, so we need to take it now and take care of it. And so, both of these cases actually now have gotten, are, are subject to writs of superintending control and are before the Supreme Court for decision on the legal issues presented in each of them. And as I say, they get very specific as to how these different acts interact with each other, and I won't get into the messy details, but that's kind of the gist of those. They're in the Supreme Court right now, the court is asking for briefing, is asking for oral argument, and we're waiting to see what they're going to say about this. I'll also say that there's been a series, probably three or four now, cases that have been filed, and they're very early, they've just filed the petition, or complaint, I should say, against the governor for, they're also private businesses. There's one here in Roswell, I think there was an article in the paper about it, filed against the governor for what's called just compensation. And those are not seeking an injunction to basically stop what you're doing, they're seeking, that's a damages lawsuit. And what they're arguing is that, basically, by closing their business, it's become a taking under the, under, under the constitution. So the, the basic idea there is that if the government takes your property for public purpose, it owes you compensation for that. The counterargument is going to be that the, when, when the, when the government exercises police powers, it doesn't owe you just compensation. So the, we are very familiar with that. When we knock down someone's house because it's a public nuisance, we don't have to go and pay that person for the value of the house we knocked down. On the contrary, they owe us for the cost of knocking it down. Because when we go out there to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, we're not taking your property without compensation, we're abating a public nuisance. While the state is going to make a similar argument against these cases and say, no, we're protecting the public health and welfare, we don't owe you any just compensation. Where that comes out, I don't know yet. These cases have just been filed, like today, or yesterday, or, you know, very early on. What I want to kind of draw out of, the lesson out of each of these, is that what we're not going to see is some kind of global order, or it's very unlikely, some kind of global order from the Supreme Court, or any court, that says that the public health orders writ large are either legal or illegal, because that's not how cases come before the courts. What happens is that, because of a doctrine called standing, you don't get to just ask for what's called an advisory opinion. I want to know if this is legal or not. You can't do that. The courts don't really deal with that kind of thing. That's exactly what distinguishes courts from the legislature and the executive. They don't, they only deal with specific controversies that are in front of them. In other words, you have to have a plaintiff with a specific gripe about a specific action that was specifically done by a specific part of the government, and that's the doctrine of standing. So what ends up happening is you get individual plaintiffs saying, this is the part of the public health order that affects me, so I'm going to challenge it. And so you'll get kind of piecemeal holdings about this part is okay, this part is not, you know, and so you could imagine a situation in which somebody was, to reference the earlier discussion, cited for criminal violation, then they would challenge that aspect of this, and that would be decided. So we're not going to see that global resolution. To be a plaintiff, to file a lawsuit, you have to meet a couple of different basic requirements. And, and that's, so you have to have injury in fact, you have to have causation, and you have to have redressability. Injury in fact means that you have an actual, personal injury that the law recognizes. What I mean by that is, you can be injured, but it's not a legal right that was injured. And I'll give you an example. If you are, if somebody offends you personally, you can't sue them, even if you have damages. I was offended, it gave me emotional distress. It's not a recognized, you're not recognized to have a right not to be offended. And that's just an example, to give you an idea of what I'm talking about. You have to have a legally recognized right to sue, and you have to have an, actually be injured. Then the injury has to be caused by some conduct of the defendant, and the defendant's, the court's decision has to be able to redress the problem. It has to be able to actually help you. You ask the court to do something, and if the court does it, will that actually help your problem? An example of something that's not redressable would be if it's moot. So what, what happened there is, let's say that you sue for an injunction, but they stopped doing it before the court decides it. Now it's moot. Well, if the court orders them stop doing that, why are you stop doing it? It's not redressable anymore because there's no action that the court can take to help you. They've stopped doing it. What do you want us to do? So those are the three elements, injury in fact, causation or redressability, that every plaintiff has to have in order to bring a lawsuit. And so, as we're moving forward with looking at what kind of lawsuits may or may not be available out there, you know, that's the kind of thing we're going to be looking at. You can't generally sue on behalf of somebody else. You can't say, well, I want to take up his rights for violation, I'm going to take them up and defend them for him. Can't do that as a general matter. There is a very rare, rare, rare exception. The court will occasionally take up matters of extreme importance just because, but that is vanishingly rare thing that very, almost never happens. They really don't like to do that because, again, issuing what's called advisory opinions, it basically nullifies the entire concept of what a court does and why it's distinguished from the legislature and the executive. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of thinking about how we would formulate or craft a lawsuit if we have one. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. We do have the gentleman who had signed up to speak on this matter, Alan Dunn. All right. Well, the pen failed partly through, that's why I'm having a hard time reading it. All right, sir, come on up. Go ahead and state your name and your address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
Only three minutes?
Yeah, we.
See, when, when one of y'all's talking, it takes about five, at least.
Tell me about it. Welcome to my world.
Okay, Alan Dunn, I'm a citizen, resident of the Roswell, New Mexico, and action item number six, I strongly approve of the city manager seeking all the litigation he can because it seems that you've got to sue somebody to get their attention. And money means a lot to a lot of people. Now, I don't know whether money needs to be involved in it or not, but somebody needs to get her attention. So, you know, folks, this thing is just getting out of hand. I know we get our feelings hurt, you know? I understand that, I get mine hurt too. But it's a blatant government overreach and an infringement upon the civil liberties of a citizen of the United States of America, a citizen of New Mexico, and a citizen of Roswell, New Mexico, to presume, to dictate that you will close your business, you will stay at home, you will social distance, and you will wear a mask. I refuse to have someone else be responsible for my health. I hope you do too. I refuse to have the governor dictate to me what I'm going to do to be healthy. I'm getting a little stirred up. It's an infringement upon our freedoms, and it's unconstitutional to abolish your freedom. And I think if it takes a lawsuit to get her attention and make her cease and desist, then we ought to do it to the fullest abilities that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Counselor Robach, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot more to say on this. I do want to just make a couple point of clarifications, as I'm looking for the actual wording. And I've got too many papers on, well, that's not the one, that's the, that's the one I'm looking for. Thank you, Mayor. I want, I want to say that this is not mandating the staff to pursue a lawsuit. I, what I really want to do is give them the, the, the political ability to pursue that if we do find that that's a useful tactic in helping our citizens in defending their, their liberties, as well as their businesses and their livelihood. So I do want to just clarify that, that this is, it says potential litigation, as it reads here, so we're not telling Joe that he has to sue the governor. I want to, but I do want to give him that, the ability, should that be necessary. Thanks. I yield.
Okay. Counselors, on item six, or, I mean, seven, six, yes. Counselor Odepesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I don't have to repeat everything that I said a while ago. And again, we put Joe in a very terrible position as a counsel, because if it's not a mandate, then why even have a resolution? And he can do that on his own, if he, if he really wants to go down that road. But I, I hope that in, in thinking this through, whether you want to litigate this or not, that you will also consider that Roswell has 64% of Hispanics minorities. And, and of course, we have like 2% blacks, and then we have like 17% elderly, which comes out to about 85%. And even if you take half of that 17% off because of Hispanics being counted twice, you still have 71% of the most vulnerable population in this community. Because that's what the statistics say, that the minorities, Hispanics in particular, and blacks are the ones that are more affected. And even if you decide to go down that road, I would even argue that you would even have a civil rights in your hand from some of the organizations that are out there. Because we, as a council, don't seem to be able to follow the law. And so you're putting our lives in danger. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Foster. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. What this is doing is giving our, our staff the ability to look into litigation. And as Mr. Patterson duly said, we have to, for litigation, we actually have to have had a grievance or a hurt. And from what I've seen, as far as her, the mandates of our motel occupancy from 25% to 50%, there's no statement to me or shown a fact of how you can have 25% people in a motel, or 50%, and still have 50% of the people in Walmart. And you have walls between you at a motel, so I don't understand how the rate of change. But we do have, of all the things that we have seen in the last few months, our lodger's tax and our bed fee that pays for this facility has been cut. And we do have a grievance as far as that. And if her order is arbitrary and capricious between 25 and 50% or 100%, if they can't show a fact of why that, that actually cuts down on the COVID transmission, then, then we do have a grievance. And so, that is why I'm for this, just to see, and for us to have the data and maybe investigate what we have actually lost because of, I mean, we have year to year, but we also need to find out what our motels, if we've hit 25%, how many people they've had to turn away, and that's what we need to find. And so this is just giving our staff the ability to do that and to direct them towards that. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Foster. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item, Counselor? All right. Anyone wishing to speak? Counselor Stubbs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of disjointed in my head now that I reread what I wrote, but this agenda item states that the litigation could be for damages to the city. And I keep thinking, what, what damages? I mean, so far, our GRT has maintained a level that we didn't need to implement furloughs, and many of our departments are rethinking how they operate, and to me, that's a really good outcome. I just wish that this body could accept that this is what it is and work on a unified strategy to recreate life that exceeds what it was, once it, pardon me, to exceed what once was considered normal. I believe this is the worst precedent a council could ever make. I pray for us to come together and do positive work together instead of the divide that this is creating right now. Thank you.
All right. I have Counselor Best.
Okay, so I'm having a hard time understanding, one, where race came into this. I, I'm having a problem with that. This, number six, is giving permission to our manager if we don't see lodger's tax in its normal form, that we can go in and take care of it through the state. Because I guarantee you, she's going to reach her hand all the way to the federal for this COVID issue. And if she's going to get money from the federal, there's no reason why it can't trickle down to our city and our citizens to try to get us back to a normal standard. I don't think it's dividing the city, I think it's making us stronger. Again, I don't see where race came into this, it just popped in from my right-hand side. I don't, I don't get it. I am voting for this because I think it's a tool that we can have in the toolbox, that we can use for later if we need it. We won't have to have a special sessions to come back and grant the manager this. It will already be in this toolbox, and we need every tool in our toolbox that we can get to combat this. Thank you.
All right. I have Counselor Peterson. Counselor Peterson, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. The Counselor Odepesa was talking about race and the, because COVID-19 affects Hispanic people more and African-American people more than the other people. So if Counselor Best didn't understand that, you know, hopefully.
Counselor, once again, I'm going to ask, let's, don't get into, once again, saying each other by name.
Sorry.
Let's just talk on the concepts.
All right.
And the topic.
We can talk after. This is a waste of time. You're going to sue the, sue the governor for what? No damage has been done. Counselor Stubbs had hit the nail on the head, no damage was done. No damage was done. You can't have a lawsuit if there's no damage. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Oropesa, let me check to see if anyone else wishes to speak who hasn't yet. I see no one wanting to jump in. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that, that race is brought up is there was an email that we got from Sharon clarifying section five and six. And one of them was to include language that said civil litigation. It's not here, it was in the email. And so if we're thinking about suing the governor for, for civil rights violation, then what, what is there to stop somebody from suing us for civil rights violation? Because we're, we're we're going to have an impact if indeed they, the, the city manager decides to go down this road and, and sue. Because now you're talking about, like I said, about 71% of the population in, in Chavez County that is affected more by the COVID-19 than the, the other populations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I have Counselor Robuck. Unless someone else wishes to speak. All right. Counselor Robuck, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the city has committed civil rights violations, I don't see how our action is going to affect us being sued one way or the other. Doesn't seem to be a relevant fact. I, I think that this body is short-sighted to think that we can take 67, 70%, whatever number of this, of the population and say that they all have the same opinion on, on this issue because of their race. Certainly, biologically and ethnically, I'm Hispanic. If you ever want to meet my parents, I'd love to have you over for tacos and beans and tortillas. And, and you can meet my, the, the abuelita of my children. I don't wear that as a badge, nor do I, nor do I, I, I enjoy my Hispanic heritage very much. But I, but there is, there's no, we can't just say that, that a certain race or a certain group thinks, thinks consistently around, about one particular topic, one particular way, without speaking to them individually. This body has to act, or doesn't have to act, but I think we are compelled to act by, by the fact that we're elected officials in accordance with the will of the people. And the will of the people, in my interpretation, which is my job as a city councillor, is to be prepared to sue the governor if necessary. And that's what we're doing, is we are reflecting the will of people. And I think that's why this was brought forward. Thank you.
I have Counselor Kennard. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just reiterate that this is to investigate litigation options. And also, as Counselor Best said, this is a tool. But I guess what I, I would like to say about this is that there are a lot of people out there that are not having their voice heard. And a lot of those people have no, so I guess what I'm saying as far as litigation for the businesses to sue, for the city to consider or investigate suing, it is because there are people that are being affected by this. And I think that we all have a responsibility to listen to our constituents both ways. And I think that this, this is a two-way street. Any decision we make up here puts us at risk for some sort of litigation. Officers go out every day and the decisions that they make put them at risk, but it still doesn't, I mean, we can't be afraid of that. We have to make decisions for the people that we serve. Thank you.
All right. I have Counselor Oropesa indicating wishes to speak. Once again, anyone else wishing to speak who hasn't yet? All right, Foster has, but Oropesa has prior. So we'll go Oropesa and then Foster. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a matter of clarification. I don't, I don't believe I said that it's 71% of Hispanics or minorities, all of them, support this. I did not say that. I said 71% are made up, or 71% of our population is made up. And that's the ones that I'm, I'm fighting for. Because those are the ones that are more vulnerable to, to contract the, the virus. There may be some that don't agree with me, I don't know. But the statistics say that, that Hispanics and blacks are the ones that are more vulnerable for this and the elderly. Whether you're, regardless of race, if you're elderly, I mean, you're, you're vulnerable. And so just as a matter of clarification, because you made it sound like 71%, I said 71% supported this, and that's not true. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Well, after I said that the city had suffered damages, we had several people say that we haven't suffered any. But if you look at our lodger's tax, it's 50,000 down from the, I'm trying to look at the month again, sorry. We were $50,000 down from April, $80,000 down from May. If that's not damages, I don't know what is. And some of that is because of her arbitrary and capricious order that 25% of our occupancy of our, of our motels. And we also have bed fees that aren't being received that pay for this facility. Those are damages. And the last statistics I heard, saw in New Mexico, 56% of the people who had contracted COVID, this was, this is over a month old, so were blacks and Native Americans. The, the rest of it, the Anglos and Hispanics were split evenly between the two. So blacks and Native Americans had, which make up approximately 12 to 15% of our population, had 56% of the, the COVID cases. And the rest were split, the 44% were split pretty evenly between Anglo and Hispanics. So, that being said, I rest.
That exhausts my list. At this point, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Let me, once again, a yes or a no. Instructs the city manager to pursue any and all manner of relief from the governor and/or the state of New Mexico through any and all channels, including potential litigation for damages, including civil rights violation resulting from restrictions imposed by governor's public health orders relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. A yes or a no instructs the city manager to pursue these matters. A no or a nay rejects that instruction and allows staff to act as they choose. Miss Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kennard? Yes. Counselor Stubbs?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Roback?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Foster? Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Motion passes six to four.
All right, thank you. Next up is item number seven. Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff's awarding of the Roswell Boys and Girls Club Improvement Project, CDBG project number 18-C-N-R-I-01-G-14. Bid number ITB 20006 to qual, to the qualified low bidder of White Sands Construction, Inc. of Almagordo, New Mexico for the amount of $1,48,123.50. That is with GRT included into that project.
I have a motion by Counselor Foster and a second by Counselor Best to approve the bid acceptance from White Sands Construction for the Boys and Girls Club, CDBG. Mr. Nahar.
Mayor, Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I want to work a little backwards this way, just, it's one of those nights to work backwards. What I would like to show you now is kind of explain to you what the project is. Because you've all heard about the project and let me explain to you firsthand what, what the project actually got out to bid and what we're doing. You see some pictures here. So let's start with the floor. On this project, we're going to deal with everything except the kitchen. I assume most of you have been inside the Boys and Girls Club. So we're, we're going to do a little something in everything except the kitchen. The kitchen's excluded, okay? So on the floors, besides the kitchen, we're not going to touch the floors in the bathrooms. But all the other floors in the gym, which will get a new gym flooring, and then all the other, all the other classrooms and offices and stuff, if they haven't already, the tile will be removed. The tile in the older building has asbestos mastic underneath. So that's one of the reasons, besides it being old. So everything except the gym floor, the bathrooms and the kitchen will all get polished concrete. So we're taking all the stuff, filling in the cracks, getting as level as we can, and then we'll polish concrete. Okay, the walls, again, not touching the kitchen. All the walls will be patched and painted. The multipurpose room, the offices, the gym, everything else will be painted. The colors that we're choosing, and you've all been in City Hall, you've all been in City Hall Annex, is the city, the city standard off-white and the city standard brown. So we're keeping that consistent, so later on, our maintenance guys, we don't have to go buy new colors. It's all, it's all the same. As you look at the gym roof, the gym will get a new roof. That's the existing roof there. And what you can't see is that some of the structural members have sagged because of the weight of the HVAC system. So we're going to put some structural reinforcement, put in, put that back, a new system in there. New insulation, new gym roof. And what you see there, the iron, it's been there since whenever the gym was built. We're actually going to clean and repaint that to the same off-white as the walls to make it look good. There are some murials in there. The Boys Club will take pictures and archive that on their own. But we will paint all the walls the off-white and they'll have a new canvas. Okay, if you look in that office there, in every office, all, and then the multipurpose room, we're going to replace all the ceiling tiles. So again, doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you look at the size of the building of, of the gym, that's required. And then we have the gym flooring. The other thing is that, that we're required to do with the new fire code, it will have a new fire alarm system. A new fire alarm system. On the outside, we're going to do the parking lot. We will save money because the city streets department will do the striping. But we'll do a little pavement maintenance and of course, patch some sidewalk, ADA ramps and stuff in the front. Also on the outside, we have some cracking. So we're going to drill some, some helical piers and kind of jack up the building and kind of close those cracks. That's about the highlights of the building, so I wanted to see that, so you could get a feel of what the project is. And we're still not touching the plumbing fixtures. We're still not touching the kitchen. Where there's other issues. I mean, we had this discussion when we came to the grant. In my perspective, this is phase one. If the, if the citizens come forward and it counts as pleasure, we might have a CDBG phase two. And I'll leave that at that. So we're here on this item to consider award and funding for the Boys and Girls Club. Because we are short some money and I'll describe that as we go. We did have five prime contractors attend the pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid. Of the five contractors, only two gave us bid. From Almagordo, White Sands Construction was the low bid and EPPX, about their Albuquerque firm. We had two locals that did not bid. One of them did contact me and say they were busy and did not, did not have the bonding capacity. The other one did not let me know why they didn't do it. So those are our bids. Counselor Foster did a good job with what the recommendation is for the, for the award, for the, for the bid. Award of ITB number, project number, bid number, and the amount, White Sands Construction. Just to remind everybody, you will award it as city council. We've already started the award process to DFA because this is CDBG, so it's concurrent. The reason we're doing this is so we can get the paperwork going to the contractors. They still got to get bonds, insurance and all of this stuff. So when they get that ready, we've already got the blessings in the DFA and we can go to work. And we're hoping to have this job done in February, which the Boys Club will be out. Getting to the funding need analysis. Okay, so here's the funding need analysis. You have the professional services, JSH Engineering to complete some structural review and inspections during construction. The South West Cog with administrative cost. Okay, one thing that we're doing here, and I, kudos to facility maintenance, that we're going to address every HVAC system in, in the building. There's one that's in good shape as we understand, but we're ordering 13 new systems. That price is 56, 59, 360, and that's with delivery. Our estimate a year ago and just a few months ago before COVID was 80,000. What's happened right now, the local carrier dealer in, in New Mexico, lots of entities are canceling their orders and their warehouses are full, so we're going to make, make a little something, something off this, this COVID deal. Of course, the bid costs, there's the $1,048,000 and change. So the total funding need is $1,138,388.98. Okay, funding recommendations, and again, under the abstract, it's to award the project and to approve the funding needs. So we have the grant, 749,000 and change. Engineering. Engineering's putting up the stuff for the outside, the parking lots, the, the sidewalk, the ADA, ADA ramps. That's coming out of what we call the engineering maintenance and repair costs, which I use to fix sidewalks, fix ADA ramps and everything else like that, the miscellaneous stuff, so that fits in. That leaves us a shortfall, which finance, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fuentes, that's going to come out of the cash balance that you saw, the 2 million plus cash balance, 275,000 and change. You add those three up and, and there's our project. And I stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nahar, Councillors? Counselor Robuck.
Just real quick, really excited about it and thanks for your work. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anyone else? If, Counselor Foster, then Counselor Stubbs. Counselor Foster.
I wanted to kind of apologize to the council for bringing it to this special city council meeting because normally this would have gone on a regular city council meeting. But this project, as y'all probably are aware, we thought we were going to be in construction last August. And it's, and one of the reasons why some of the cost is higher than what we expected was because we have, it's, the bids, I think the estimate was made in 2018, so the estimate was two, two years old. But I appreciate y'all, this, this lengthy meeting, or letting us add this to this. And as y'all are aware, I am on the, the board for the Boys and Girls Club, but I have no financial ties to it except for that I give money to them. And, but this is a, a great needed project and it's, and it's just great for our kids to get something redesigned. So, and thank you, Mr. Nahar, for looking after this project.
All right, thank you. Counselor Stubbs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious, Louis, do you know how old this building is? And I'm asking that because I'm curious about.
That question was asked during the pre-bid questions in one of the discovery questions. The best that I can tell and the answer that I gave, the question was, were there insurance purposes? How old was the building and the total square footage? The total square footage is about 26,500 square feet. And the best that I could tell, what I could find, it was built in 1964.
Okay, I, the reason, I didn't, got to finish my question, but the reason I'm asking is, has anyone estimated the structural, the actual structural integrity of that building? Is it in pretty good shape?
It's in pretty good shape. We are, part of the project was helical. Uh, we are, part of the project was helical piers. And we're going to go down sixty feet. If you walked around the building, you can see the cracks in the, in, in the corners. And then even, we're going to have to go in one of the offices in what they call the weight room, take out some of the floor, but we are jacking helical cores with concrete, sixty-foot in depth to, to re-support it. So yes, ma'am, that has been reviewed.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That exhausts my list. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll call for another roll call vote. A yes or a no approves the awarding of the contract as presented. A no or a nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Mr. Neb. Normal forty slide presentation.
Next sixty slides, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, I actually have nothing else to say, but I want to thank you for your time tonight. I know the work is, is sometimes tenuous and, and the debate is, is enjoyable, so. But thank you for the work. Uh, we have a budget prepared. Uh, and I know as we move into the year and we move into seeing exactly what the future brings, we will be making adjustments to that. And they will all be coming forward to have that more conversation with you. So again, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Best, I understand you want to extend some thanks.
I do. Matt, you're the only one here from the Fire Department. And I was at the Commissioner's meeting today at the courthouse on St. Mary's Place. I want to say thanks to the Fire Department for rushing in with their axes when they had a little bit of an electrical fire. The boys could have stripped from the waist up for us girls holding the axes. It would have been a little more exciting, but thank you for your fast response.
Thank you. Counselor Best. Having nothing else to discuss, the time I have is seven nineteen. We are adjourned.